We're ready. I've got six o'clock.
Yep, we're ready to go.
I'll call this, so, special media of the Christiansburg Town Council, scheduled for April the 21st, 2020. It is a budget workshop, work session. We will hear from Val and Randy over the current annual budget, where we are right now, and the draft annual budget for 2021. And I understand that these presentations are brief, much briefer than the work session we had on the 7th. So, we will, I will again ask to hold your questions. I will give you ample time after their presentations to enter into questions. I will go by seniority on council, but I can assure you, you have all the time that you will need. With that, Randy, Val, I'll turn it over to you.
I'll just ask that Val give a summary of the changes to the budget from the last meeting, and then after that, we'll really just turn it over to you for discussion.
Okay, so really, the changes were we added back the $800,000 for the paving. We took out the VRS multiplier. We took out the comp increases for public works. And we took out the merit increase. And those three things kind of were made up for by putting the paving back in. So, we're kind of at about the same place we were. We're now at an ending fund balance projected for, at the end of the year, of 15.5 million, which is 42.31% of the fund balance. So, we're a little above what our target is for fund balance. But given the circumstances, that's probably right where we want to be right now. And that's about it. That's the only changes.
Do you have where we are now on the 2019 budget? Is it, did we have that presentation scheduled?
No.
Okay, very good.
We have what we expect to expand. That was adjusted slightly in this new draft. And what we expect to, so, that was also adjusted a little bit in this draft. Nothing major. I mean, it was a little bit in parks and rec revenue and a little bit in aquatics revenue. Some reductions in expenditures for the part-time employees in both parks and rec and aquatics. So, those were brought down in the estimated to spend number. So, those did change a little bit for some of the more current information we have. And as we go along in the process, if we have more valid information or more current information that we can, you know, update it with, we'll go ahead and do that. But I think we're on the estimated to expand. We're right about where we think we're going to be. So, right now, we're expecting to end the year with a fund balance of about 19.4. And so, of that, we're going to use some to continue and complete projects going forward.
Very good. Randy, anything to add to that?
No, I don't really have anything to add. I know a few of the things that we wanted, I guess, clarity on. One would be, we had been asked to take a look at Blacksburg Transit and trying to keep basically the funding for Blacksburg Transit neutral in, from last year's budget to this year's budget. I'd made the suggestion of eliminating the commuter service to accomplish that. I know, I think, three of you responded back, you thought that was appropriate. I just want to make sure that that's a majority opinion. Also, we just want to get clarity on whether you want to include the Kiwanis Trail as a rollover project for next year. And also, I've had serve all of you ask about revisiting the community support applications, for funding for community support.
Okay. Mr. Stipes?
So, we're to community support now?
If that's what you'd like, yes.
Yes. Okay, so, as far as the Blacksburg Transit, Randy, I'm not sure if I responded. I thought I did, but if I didn't, I agree with that. Option two is eliminate the commuter service and keep our costs to the, you know, current level. As far as the community support goes, the tally is in, and Val has circulated the second tally. But what the second tally does not capture is some of the comments out to the side. And so, I'm just going to go through a few of these that I would like to suggest revisiting, or at least just my opinion. The Wonder Universe, I had said no on that, but I put a note out to the side that I would support their current funding level. They have relocated to Christiansburg, and they have put in great facility. And I know it's not open now, but it will be shortly. And I support, I would support funding it at the previous level of $15,000. The Christiansburg Institute revised their estimate, or revised their request from $80,000 to $18,000. When I looked at their breakdown in costs, they're including a visioning cost with a architect, which I think is worthwhile. And I would consider funding their revised request at $18,000 after further council discussion. The DCI Downtown Christiansburg, Inc., I said no on that as well. But I think with the reduced, I would support up to $10,000 for that. They've been a great partner in the downtown and events. And of course, the season is cut short with what we're going through. But I would, I would support funding them at $10,000. The Montgomery Museum is probably the most important thing to bring up. I'd also said no on that, but my note to that was, I would support them at the current funding level. The Christiansburg, the Montgomery Museum operates on an $83,000 per year budget total. And they do not ask the town for any additional money with the tourism revenue and so forth for their downtown events. And their staff, I'm afraid, if we don't fund them, that the program could actually be jeopardized this year. So, I would, I would recommend that we fund them at their previous request in last year's allocation of $18,000. And as far as ACE goes, down at the bottom, that passed at $50,000. And I would suggest maybe we revisit that at $25,000 at last year's funding level. So, those are my, my comments on the community support.
Any comments or discussions on those?
Brad, could I just ask you what you, your recommendation was on DCI again?
Okay, so DCI requested $22,000. Last year's request was for $20,000. And I had said no, I said no across the board to increases. I should have clarified that to begin with. Across the board, we're not increasing anybody or anything, our employees across the board. So, I said no to everything that was an increase in the request. Going back to DCI, their request was for $22,000. Last year, it was $20,000. But this year, I do not want them to lose heart with us. And I know they're going to have operating expenses. And assuming this pandemic clears out, and we still have the fall and the late fall activities, I think $10,000 is an appropriate level for funding them this year.
Brad, I want to clarify one thing. You said that the CI request was for 18? I thought it was for 15?
I may be mistaken. I thought, was it for 15?
That's, I think that's what I saw in the email this morning.
Okay, well, I said no before for the $80,000, and I wrote $18,000 down here with my personal notes. But if it is 15, then I would support that. And I stand corrected if that's the case. Was it $15,000? Are you looking at that?
No, the actual request from Christiansburg Institute was for $80,000.
No, the original request was.
Oh, yes, but I don't think I saw their secondary request.
Yeah, they sent out a new one.
They sent an email yesterday to council, and they copied me. I'll forward it to you.
Okay.
It was, let's put it in the $15,000 to $18,000 range. But what attracted my, what attracted my attention about that and my support is actually, they have some planning activities to actually decide what can be done and how much it will cost to restore the building. So, the $15,000 to $18,000 range for their revised request, I would support if the majority does.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. Sax?
Mike? Mayor Barber?
Yes, sir.
Should I make some comments now on what he said?
Let me, let me get around to you in the next.
Wait till my turn.
Yeah, since we're now discussing the community support.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do.
Mr. Showalter? Brad, are you through? I'm sorry.
I am absolutely through. Thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Showalter?
Okay, thanks. Randy, real quick, what were the couple items you had? It was a commuter transit service.
Yes, eliminating the, I guess, at least for one year, some of the capital, the operating capital. Well, I guess, the operating, sorry, the operating reserves for it was one option. And the third option, hang on just a second.
Because I believe that is the least used service that we, that we offer out there.
The commuter route is fairly sparsely used.
Okay. Because I know the years I rode the commuter service, a lot of the wage employees at Virginia Tech, which is, of course, Valley's largest employer, they did use it. Now, when I was riding it, there was a large contingent of riders, especially that demographic. But, you know, with the, you know, that's when gas was over, up above $3 a gallon. But you said already, three council members weighed in on that?
Correct.
Okay. I would, I would encourage we keep that, but I'll leave it to the majority of council that you polled either tonight. But those who did not email Randy, and I believe I was one of them, if you would chime in tonight, again, it's something I would like to still see that we fund, given the event we're in right now. But I did know that the majority of people who rode that bus were typically the dining services staff from Christiansburg over to Tech and then back again. When it comes to the, what was the other one? Was there one before community support?
Well, in regards to the transit service, it was either eliminating the commuter route or eliminating capital reserve or operating reserve were the three options there. The community support is really up to your discussion, whichever items you want to discuss. The revised Christiansburg Institute request was for $15,000 yesterday.
Right, and I received that email as well. I still stick with my initial decision to wait until the end of the first quarter, just to make sure that everything's returned somewhat back to normal. And people are out and about, students are back, football season is in. I would like for us to wait and look at those additional items. But again, it's the majority of council. The majority of council wants to move forward with these changes. These are all great organizations. Me personally, I'd like us to wait on these until the first quarter. About the only one I would change is the Habitat for Humanity. So, I may have been the only vote on that one. But if there was one addition to it, I would like to see them back in there. Construction's still going on. But again, I would like to revisit it in the first quarter and maybe fulfill a lot of these organizations' requests for full funding. But again, it's up to council at this point.
Thank you. Mr. Hopper?
I'd like to, I'm sort of echoing what Brad said during his bit concerning the Wonder University. You know, Henry, if we wait on that, I think everybody has been to the mall and seen what they have there. And it's outstanding for kids. And, you know, they have to steal their clothes down right now, but they've got to pay rent to the mall. And I just don't think it'd be a good idea to wait on that. And I would copy what Brad says and to give them $15,000. Same thing for Montgomery Museum. I think that would be good to give them 18. And I don't think it's good waiting on that. I mean, they've got their heritage. They have several things planned for this summer, and they're going to need, and they really count on us for financial support. Downtown, Inc., I thought that was a good idea, going $10,000. And, you know, they're going to help us, but, you know, it looks to me like before they can help us, the summer's going to be half over. So, I think the $10,000 on that is fine. Concerning ACE, I agree with, you know, what they do is tremendous. But I think this year, $25,000 is what I would, I would support too. The bus thing that Randy brought out, Randy, I'm not sure if I replied or not, but I agree with what you, what you're saying there. I think that's about. Concerning CI, I'm not really seeing how, you know, we gave them $75,000 last year. And I haven't seen any kind of response on that. And I think maybe Henry's idea on something like that, wait until this fall, and then then see, and then maybe they can get back with us, and we can take it for that. And the only other question I would have, I have a question for you, Randy. The governor had originally said, he's going to try to open up things, June 3rd, I believe is what I heard. Have you heard anything more?
Well, you have that extension of the executive order 53 until May 8th, which basically is what has the closure of non-essential businesses and the closure of restaurant dining areas. So, that's what basically limits restaurants to takeout and delivery only. Whether he extends that, you know, right now, that kind of doesn't necessarily job with the June date that he has. So, I've got a feeling there's going to be some type of other announcement between now and May 8th. But I can't necessarily tell you whether he'll extend the May 8th date or whether he'll bring the June date in closer. I don't really know, and that's kind of anybody's guess. But the June date is the stay-at-home order.
And I know you'll keep, you'll keep us on top of this.
Yes.
All right, Mayor, that's all I have.
Mr. Bishop?
I hear you.
How about now?
That's now.
Okay, let me start over. The big thing I have is going to be the ACE program. You know, I know it's a great program, but to jump from $25,000 to $50,000, I think at $50,000, that's a large sum of money. I can agree with the $25,000. I believe last year, we gave them $25,000, but they didn't ask for anything. So, I don't know how I jumped up to $50,000 all of a sudden. So, I still, I think I didn't support that, and I still can't support it at that rate. I still have concerns about Christiansburg Institute. There is things they listed as far as they put in a security system in that building. And I don't see how, I don't think they're at that stage yet. I mean, there's no, there's no electricity going to the building. So, I don't know how they're going to do security in there. So, if they can provide more information, I would continue to think about that one. The Blacksburg Transit, Randy, I don't think I responded back to you. If I did, I apologize. But right now, I agree with what you're saying, taking out the canoe, the part of it, if it's not used that much. And going back to the grants, far as everything else, the way I voted the last time, the first time, right now, I'm going to stick with that.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Sax. Ms. Sax?
I did respond to you, Randy, but I did vote to keep the cost neutral and discontinue the service because it wasn't used that much. Kiwanis Trail, I really need to read up on that a little bit more before I could give you any of my advice. Now, I did want to compliment the budget, because last year, I know we had a lot of meetings. I had a lot of questions, and I didn't find the same concerns this year. So, thank you very much. You guys did a wonderful job, and I appreciate what you put into it and the cutbacks that you've made. I do think it's reduced. I think it's fair. And now, to get to community support, I could go through here and say, you know, I feel like some group needs more, some needs less. What I'd like to propose is, we've never been in this situation before with the COVID virus. Why don't we allow everybody on this list to be fair, to change their ask? To, and knowing that it's either a yes or a no, and they have to, you know, be reasonable in their request. And I think those that have reached out to us understand how that works, but some others may not. So, just to be fair, I'd like to do that and have us stick with our policy of a complete yes or a complete no, and just allow them to change what they're asking for. Let's see. Bear with me just a second. I had made a few notes. I don't want to miss something. Oh, I also think putting a $25,000 cap on it this year is a good idea.
Is that the ACE program?
Well, yes. That would be the highest, you know, anybody could ask for. It's just that this year is so challenging and difficult. I think that putting a cap on it would be a good idea. And that's all the notes I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hicks?
So, Valerie, can you please be able to have the community support screen thing up on the screen for everybody to look at, please?
Sure.
Thank you. So, we have gone back and forth to that page. And this community support people, I would love to see that over there. But DCI asked for over $20,000. $5,000 was for traveling expenses. Downtown Christiansburg Incorporated is really working for the best interest of the central business, which they call downtown. I don't see them benefiting anybody down at the mall. We're not doing anything for people on Runoff Street, no one in Cambridge Street that I know of, and nothing else down in other areas of the town of Christiansburg. So, for them, for us to give $20,000, actually, $22,000 to an organization, nonprofit organization, for them to do things downtown, I do think that we need to have other, why don't they open up a GoFundMe page? All these other organizations can open GoFundMe pages. So, if they want the support of the people, the people can actually support them. The ACE, I do think that the number is quite high for this year. We went from $25,000 to $50,000 this year. I think that's really, really high. I do think that, at the same time, we're trying to look, review all these organizations, we decided to tell McKee not to give them another $2,000 additional that they need to provide the help to the community. And they're the people that are able to help with water bills and food assistance for a lot of people in the community. And so, for them to be able to do more help during this COVID-19, I do think that those are the people that we do need to increase that bill for, from the $3,500 to the $5,500. But all I hear is you guys decreasing for some or the nonprofit organizations that are not even doing anything right now. So, I really don't think that we should be supporting those organizations right now considering what we're going through right now as a community. Valerie, are we going to be talking about the budget later on? We're just talking about community support right now, correct?
Community support.
Yeah.
Now, can you explain, Randy, can you explain the message that you sent to the people over here, please, about the three options with the Blacksburg Transit as well?
Okay. Basically, the three options I presented were, one was elimination of the commuter service. The second option was basically to not fund the cap, the operating reserve, which is kind of a one-time hit to the budget. Also, to not fund the capital reserve, which we use for things like bus replacement. That would kind of be another one-time hit. The only, I guess, bad things about reducing those are that they only make up the difference for one year. And you can't, I don't think we could stand to take that type of hit to those reserve funds every year going forward. So, we'd be looking at a cut potentially next year if we were to go either of those routes. But if you were to defund the commuter route, that would basically cover the cost increase in service.
How much is that cost increase?
Just a second, and I'll look it up. I believe it was around $35,000 or $40,000.
It was in the $30,000, $30-ish range that I remember reading the email.
So, what you're asking is for us to see, we can go and fund the Blacksburg ones and use some of the capital reserves to help with the bus transportation. Is that correct?
The increase was $30,568, but then they were also asking for additional match on the new bus, which we essentially are saying, no, that's what we've been paying reserve. You can take the capital for the bus out of the capital reserve, but reduce the commuter services. And that will keep the budget even with last year, but we'll be getting rid of that commuter service.
And it is the commuter service between Christiansburg and Blacksburg, Blacksburg, Christiansburg, kind of the round trip thing?
Correct.
It is not well-used. I think the figures I've seen on it are not very encouraging.
Well, now, that capital money that you're talking about, the reserves funding, is that part of the money you were planning to use for the park, correct?
Those reserve funds are actually held by Blacksburg Transit for operating reserve. And like I said, Blacksburg Transit. And that money is, like I say, it's basically held in their reserves. It's the town's money, but it's for our reserves for Blacksburg Transit, either operating or capital. Like I say.
So, I do not agree with giving them more money for a bus and things like that when we are having our own problems over here in the town of Christiansburg. The Aquatic Center, they're not giving us increases. We, I see the Virginia Tech Airport and everybody else wanting to get increases for cola. But here, the town of Christiansburg doesn't get no increases for anything. We don't increase anything for anybody. As far as, but we do want to increase the water bills and everything else for the people on the fall.
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Hicks, the water rate has been taken out? We're not increasing the water.
At the end of the year, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
If you're saying you're taking it out of the budget, I will expect for it to be completely gone out of the budget. But I see in the budget, which I'm more than sure Valerie is going to show us in a little bit, I see the Thomas Wilson property in there in capital projects for 2021. And then I also see the Hickok Street capital project in there as well. So, I don't know, where am I missing? Am I missing something? Because you guys keep putting these things in there. But you say you're taking it out, but I still see it under the budget. And you still say that we're going to be looking at this back in the fall, but is that really in the budget? But we're making a decision about the budget for the year right now, correct?
The increases aren't in the budget for the year. The, the increases aren't in the budget for the year, although, you know, you are free to revisit the increases in the fall. You can revisit the budget completely in the fall if you like. But the increases are not, not budgeted at all for next year i- in the current draft budget.
Now, the capital improvements are things that we've been committed to over the years. Was that on the, uh, the ongoing improvement to the Water Authority?
We are always doing water projects.
Yeah.
In our budget, then they would be our projects.
Okay.
You know, it's just basically, you know, we do parts of projects, part of it's just kind of line maintenance in general for, for both water and sewer. Uh, we have scaled back the amount of projects that we had planned for next year because of the reduction, but we would still plan to do some capital projects.
Hey, Randy. May I ask a question or comment? Is that okay, Joanna?
Yes, Mrs. Fox.
Um, could you please explain the DEQ? And the regulations that are put on us. Um, I've had some citizens concerned about, you know, are, are we just doing this? You know, as a maintenance if we feel like it, but I'd like them to understand what's behind it.
If, if you don't do maintenance, then sooner or later you will get a consent order from Department of Environmental Quality to make, make repairs. If you have documented sewer leaks, sooner or later you will get a consent order. If you have too many documented overflows, you have to report all your overflows. And DEQ looks at contamination in creeks, things like that. If you are hitting thresholds for overflows or, or you're having too much contamination in your creeks because you aren't maintaining your lines properly, you can't get a consent order from DEQ basically ordering you to replace lines. I have known of localities who have smaller systems than ours, but they've gotten consent orders to literally replace their entire sewer system. Which is obviously hu- huge ticket item if you get a consent order like that. Part of what the town has traditionally done is to try to do projects as we go to get in a position so you don't have to literally replace all your lines at one time. Because that can real- really just be overwhelming for any locality.
Okay, so going to what she's talking about, we are talking about we are getting charged three dollars and seventy cents for a thousand gallons from the, um, from the Water Authority. And here in the town, we get charged eight dollars for a thousand gallons. The majority of families here in the town use over a thousand gallons, I'm more than sure, per month. My bill alone, just the water itself, it's over eighty dollars a month, but I obviously have four kids. Right now we have over, uh, what was it, over five hundred people that have been being able to pay their water bill in the town of Christiansburg today. And so the, the fact that you want to increase this water, have this water increases later in the fall to fix, to do some maintenance, when you can actually go in and use some of the reserves with the town council approval. Or money that you're reserving on the side for a park, instead of using it in things that are infrastructure that are needed in the town, I think it's a stupid idea not to u- not to use the money to fix what we need to be fi- have fixed in the town. I think for you guys to continue to use this money in capital projects that are not, that are wants instead of needs, when right now the, the community is hurting. The community is, they're the ones that are having to pay for your jobs. They're the ones paying for all of you guys' jobs. And so for you guys to say that is going to, that you, the only solution is to increase people's water bills, just like you did with the stormwater fee, the stormwater fee for a house may be six dollars. But for the rest of the citizens, for the business owners, I can tell you, just alone with our businesses, the businesses that we do have, our water, our sewer bill, well, not the stormwater fees, went over five hundred dollars more a year. There are businesses that are paying over a thousand dollars a year in a stormwater fees. And what are you guys doing for those businesses in return? Are you replacing their, are you replacing their storm uh, water connections? Are you doing anything to, to fix their problems? Instead of just putting it in one side of the town? You've got to fix the infrastructure of that, of the town. That is a need for our town. Increasing water bills and the stormwater fees and, and garbage fees and everything else, the community. Very soon people are not gonna be able to live in this town.
Randy, Randy, could you, Randy, could you explain the water fee and that it's an enterprise fund? And that it doesn't go to pay for other projects? Could you cover that once again? Cause I know we've covered it several times over the past few meetings, but could you straighten that out here tonight?
Water and sewer are enterprise funds and the stormwater fund is also a, an enterprise fund. The funds from those cannot be used to cover costs in any, in any other expense. They can't go to general fund at all. They can't be used for park.
We're not talking about the water and the, and I'm not talking about water and sewer. Moving that money around. I'm talking about all their money in the town from reserves. You can always, as town council members, you can always make that decision to move those funds around. To fix the infrastructure in the town. You cannot tell me you cannot move that money around. Yeah, you can.
You, you, you can use general fund dollars to subsidize the enterprise fund, but you cannot use enterprise fund dollars to subsidize general fund or any other projects. And, and there, there are no water increases included in the budget and the parks not included in the budget.
They are in the budget for later on to be revisited.
Ms. Hicks, have, have you gone over to the water plant?
I have, Mr. Um. Uh, Hopper.
Hopper, yeah. You have been over there?
Yes, Mr. Hopper. We don't own the facility.
All right, let, let me tell you why I brought that up. Have you seen how much the expenses to keep us, not only just us, but the whole Montgomery County area, Blacksburg, Virginia Tech, how that water plant keeps us going and the expense?
I understand it's important.
Hold on, let me finish, let me finish. I haven't finished.
Three dollars and seventy cents.
Mr. Hopper has the floor, Ms. Hicks.
Ms. Hicks, will you let Steve answer or at least state his opinion?
Can I finish now?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So this is, this taking this money, if, if we just wait on this longer and longer, like, like Mr. Wingfield has brought out, we're gonna get hurt in a big way trying to repair all the water for the entire town and the whole area. If we do it step by step, that's the important thing right there. And, and, uh, you keep on talking about reserves and all that. And I think you know that the town has to keep some reserves, just for big, big discussions here, big areas. And I think you're very lucky. I mean, if I had my way, I would have increased that tax from eight dollars to nine dollars. Because I don't a- approve of stealing money from one thing to another thing. And we need to just take everything in, in order there. And I think it would be important for you maybe to discuss these things with, with Randy or, or the engineering department even before you came here to this meeting here, to have a little bit better idea of, of the total picture.
Thank you.
Mr. Hopper. The money that we are paying the water company, we are paying for those services. Is their company, we pay into it, we pay three dollars and seventy cents for a thousand gallons. You don't understand that that water increase will affect more people. Right now, we don't have, a lot of people don't have jobs in here in the town of Christiansburg. A lot of people got laid off. A lot of people don't even have their businesses open right now. And they're still expected to pay real estate taxes in another two months. What are you gonna do to freeze those real estate taxes too? You're not gonna do nothing for it.
That's county real estate taxes. We don't pay ours.
We do have town taxes as well, real estate town taxes. We pay double taxes in the town of Christiansburg if you live in the town of Christiansburg.
Right, but Joanna, the real estate tax is not set to increase.
It is not, but we're not putting a freeze on it right now for not charging people.
There is the water bill.
We're still gonna have to pay for, for that in another month or two.
So you're saying to waive all real estate fees?
No, I am not saying that, but you're not doing anything. I'm just saying.
Well, what's your solution?
I have that real estate money coming in in another two months if people don't have jobs.
Well, what's your solution?
My solution is, is stop increasing water bills in the fall too, because.
We, we, we decided last meeting to freeze the wa- we decided last meeting.
Just enough, that's enough.
And so we have, I mean.
It was last meeting. It was, it, Joanna, it was decided last meeting.
What was the decision?
We're not increasing stocks. Excuse me?
We're not increasing the water bill.
Cut it off.
Thank you.
Anyway, so we are, we're talking about that community support.
Okay.
So as far as the community support thing, I think we're really boarded on this. I, I hold on my decision on that besides the, the ACE thing. I think we only should give them twenty-five thousand dollars for right now. And if it has to be revisited on another time maybe, but right now during this time, I don't think we have to be spending money that we don't have.
Okay, thank you very much. I have, uh, I've been doing a little bit of legwork on, on community support and the, the effect of certain things that we do. What I would like to do is, is sit down with, uh, Randy and, and Val tomorrow and get a, send out a new vote sheet. If council is willing to look at it and vote again. And I guess that's what I'd have to do, know from you all. Are you willing to look at the, hopefully the third and final vote?
No. Only interested if they have a chance of redoing their numbers, given the situation. I think that's the only reason we would have to go back and visit it.
But I don't want to prolong that whole process five or six more weeks, then we get into having to present a budget. And we don't have the correct funds in there. I would like to, uh, is there anybody on council that does not want or would not consider voting again on, uh, community support with some revised figures? And even the figures that are revised in there, you know, had to vote for, for doesn't reach the majority, then it's out.
Well, what do we have to lose? Uh, another meeting, spending thirty minutes talking about community support in lieu of the main part of the budget. Mike, just send it out again so that there's a, there's a concise either we support or we don't. And include a section of a reduced amount and then the majority rules, just like with everything else.
I, I agree with that, Henry and Mike. Of course, you know, we always, we always have these long things to do this. And what, Randy, what percentage of the budget is, is these, uh, the amount of money we're talking about?
It's a very small percent. I can calculate it for you, but it's, it's a very small percent.
Far less than one-tenth of a percent. Mr. Bishop, you all right looking at it again? Mr. Bishop? Are you?
Yes.
Take, all right, Mr. Stipes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, Ms. Hicks?
No.
Okay. All right. Community support is, we, we've got some ideas working on it. So, or I have, but I haven't run by Randy and Val, but I would like to have your, uh, you know, your thoughts on it. So is there anything else to come before this meeting tonight?
Um, yes, Mayor, I do have a comment. Um, Mrs. Hicks, you had mentioned the stormwater sewer rates to businesses. And I agree that it is high right now. I've thought that before I even ran. And I've been working on this for two years now. It is in the town being reviewed, the rate fees, to see what we can or cannot do to modify those to be fair to businesses. So in case you weren't aware of that, I just wanted to let you know.
Very good.
All right, so, yes. We didn't really go through some of the budget stuff, but I do see that the sixty thousand dollars from there to give the Virginia Tech Airport is still there.
Yes.
Why we use the money back in Christiansburg? Those sixty thousand dollars, do you know that because of the COVID-19, the Virginia Tech Airport in Blacksburg, that is located in Blacksburg, just got a, um, some kind of, uh, money from the government. Sixty-nine thousand dollars, I believe, that's what they got just recently. And they got a million dollars within the last year as well from grants from the government. So I don't think we need to keep that in our budget. That is the Christiansburg taxpayers' money. The majority of the town Christiansburg citizens don't get to use the Virginia Tech Airport. I will say, put it back in our budget. We're gonna need it. We're gonna need it to help with this water bills for people.
Mrs. Hicks, did, have you researched what an authority is?
I do. I know I, we're part of it, Mrs. Mrs. Sox, aren't we? Yeah, we are. We are just along with Virginia Tech and Blacksburg and everybody else. Everybody contributes to that. I know that. And everybody, every town gets to make their own fees. Right now the town of Christiansburg wants to increase our water bills and the me-.
Ms. Hicks, we get off the water bill thing, we are not increasing the water bills.
You're trying to do it later in the fall or you're trying to.
We were, we did not say we were. We said we could look at it. My feeling is no.
Look at it. It's still in the budget for the next four years.
Okay. We don't have a choice. Do you want to be like Flint, Michigan, Mrs. Hicks? We have a responsibility to provide.
Millions of dollars in reserves for a park that you can use with the town council approval to move around. Yes, you can.
Okay, you have your vote, we all have our vote. Thank you for your opinion. But we just cannot pull out of an authority and say, sorry, we're not spending money with you anymore.
Pulling out of an authority. I never say pulling out of an authority.
Then what did you say?
We're not pulling out of the water company. We're taking money out of our reserves that we have at the town.
We're getting nowhere fast on this. And I do think that, you know, the budget will be presented to the public, I think, the twenty, somewhere around the twenty-first of May? Is that, and I'm off on that, but anyway, we have to present it and we have to have received comment on it. And it's the things that you are for or in the budget to note for it. If it's what you don't like, if you don't like the budget, then don't vote for the budget. That's, that's the best we can do. But I don't see, you know, I, I can see the value of the tech airport in the testing kits that, uh, a citizen from Christiansburg that has his plane booked over there, took two trips to Atlanta to pick up the testing kits that we're using in town now.
You could fly them to Roanoke as well. Or you could use other, why did it take us weeks to get those tests, you know, we had in the town of Christiansburg? It took us weeks to get them. I've been asking for those test kits for a long time and they just showed up.
Ms. Hicks, you give yourself way too much credit on that. We didn't have them available for a long time.
Well.
And, and when we got them, they were held up for ten days. They were held up for ten days in Atlanta. And we flew down and got them.
We will never, we will never know the value. You could never quantify it's, it, you could never quantitate the value of the various authorities we are in. And there's probably a dozen. Each and every one of those is ones that every one of the members gauges to be in their best interest. And this is no different than the Economic Development Authority from Montgomery County. Uh, the nine-one-one authority, the Water Authority. All of these authorities is what makes this an attractive place for business to develop and locate and expand. So I'm done talking about it and I, I respect the difference of opinion. But these authorities that we're part of is the reason we're successful and the reason you have a business, Ms. Hicks, for real estate and the reason we're all winning here as a region. So that's it.
Ms. Shawalter, did you ever?
Use the Virginia Tech Airport, Mr.?
I actually did have, Mike, we could, you know, this seems to become, a lot of these things seem to be, uh, coming up all the time by Joanna. Can you just do a straw vote, um, uh, here about the Virginia Tech Airport, whether to keep it in or not at its current funding?
Well, I, you know what, but Henry Shawalter, you work for Virginia Tech. Why do you even have a vote on this or a say on this?
For the, I don't work for the Airport Authority.
Well, you work for Virginia Tech, so I'm more than sure your voices fly in and out of there.
We're good, again, we're good.
I haven't finished, Mr. Barber. You know, we.
You're about to be finished.
Thousand dollars, the same amount that Blacksburg pays into that.
I don't know what Blacksburg pays into. I'd say it's at least sixty.
Well, they paid fifty thousand dollars last year and this year they're gonna pay sixty thousand dollars. Why are we paying the same amount and they're getting more of the, the benefits?
Okay, thank you.
But who's to say they're getting more of the benefits? We have large corporations here. We have economic development. If you don't have an airport that these small plants can fly into, there's a good chance we wouldn't have a Wolverine according, big employers.
You're talking about NRV airport.
No, ma'am.
No.
See the benefits. But the one over here in Blacksburg, no. The majority of people that you say is to fly in and out to go to the Virginia Tech games.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else to come before this meeting tonight?
This is a point of clarification. So we want to do one more look at community support, do another tally. We'll incorporate that into a new draft. Are there any other changes that we want to make to the draft before it goes for public comment?
Can I ask you something, Valerie? Is there a way that we can do an interim budget for the fall, since there are so many things in this budget that may change?
That's up to us.
Yeah, I mean, we, they're just items that if the economy turns around, they're the things that we would think would be important to revisit. But if council so chooses, you don't have to revisit any of it. You can say none of it gets approved going forward. The economy improves. These are the projects that we feel have the strongest merit to move forward and the highest priority to move forward, but only if we get an economic recovery that is going fairly well come the fall. So the point of putting those notes in there was just to bring your attention to what we consider high priority to reconsider in the fall, not necessarily something that has to be in the budget. Just that it's a high enough priority that we would like you to take a look at it if we have a strong economic recovery coming in the fall.
Okay, so I'll get with you on the updated information for another straw vote. Is there, is there anybody that does, that wants to take the additional ten thousand dollars away from the airport, other than Mrs. Hicks? Okay, thank you. Anything else to come before the meeting? Thank you. We're adjourned.